I have a hard time keeping my Apple pencil charged up.
We'll call this meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Trustee Polly.
Trustee Laffin.
Here.
Clark Palavich here. Treasurer Ellery Summers here. Trustee Crowell.
Here.
Trustee Reiner.
Here.
Supervisor Skibby.
Here. Moving forward to the adoption of the agenda, are there any additions, corrections to the agenda as presented? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'm moved.
We have a motion on the table to approve the agenda as presented. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda as is signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Agenda has been adopted. This is the first opportunity for public comment. Seeing none in person, is there anybody online that has public comment at this point? If so, please use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or shoot a text so that we can identify you. Again, this is the first opportunity for public comment. If there's any public comment online, please identify yourself so that we can accommodate. And seeing no participation, move forward to payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to make payment of the bills?
I'll make the payment.
We have a motion. We have support by trustee Reiner. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Clark Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. Moving forward in the agenda are the minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, which was a regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any corrections, additions, or substitutions to the minutes as presented for the meeting of minutes of September fourteenth? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the minutes of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to approve the minutes of September fourteenth. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. Minutes have been approved. Moving forward into old business is a fire department update. And to that, our chief is actually MFR class, but I will address one aspect of the fire department update, which was, excuse me, the the extension of the letter of understanding or the letter of agreement with IAFF eighteen fifty-nine, taking the understanding from September thirtieth to December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one, affording, obviously, as it states, the four articles of that agreement is to allow some of flexibility in the workplace. We do have a signature by the president of the union, Lieutenant Stevens, but at this point in time, I've entertained a motion to sign the extension of the letter of agreement to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there a support?
Support.
Trustee Crowell with support. Further discussion?
I just have a question. It doesn't say on here on December thirty-first.
Yes, it does.
Oh, up there.
Yep, we're running out of space. So, yes, it is.
The staff recommended? Do the three of you recommend it?
Yes. Yeah. Most definitely. So, we have any further discussion as to the letter of agreement? Roll call please.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Laffin.
Yes.
Clark Palavich, yes. Treasurer Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby.
Yes. We'll sign that and get that back to IAFF representation. We are currently another thing the chief and I did today were to go through a fairly significant stack of applications for the firefighter MFR position. I helped him reduce that by fifty, sixty percent, getting into applicants that are deemed to go to the next level. So, he's well into that. And as I formerly mentioned, he's not available this evening because he's currently taking this MFR course this evening. Cash or Michelle, anything to add in terms of fire department update? I think that kind of covers everything thus far.
With the newest hire, Jimmy, he got his final certification and will start full-time on Monday, October fourth. He will be still doing some paid-on call shifts.
That's James.
Yeah.
Bonus.
Yes. So, he's good to go.
Yes, Norm.
I'll ask my normal question. How's the plan coming? We'll be meeting Wednesday again, right?
We were discussing that today. We didn't know what day we.
Yeah. So, to that answer, to that question, the the plan right now, as unfortunately over the past two weeks, is to function the rest of the six months. And right now, with the staffing level of being four, part of that concern is mitigating overtime expense and giving reprieve to existing staff that are working very exacerbated time schedule. So, as to that question, there is no firm answer that we have at this point in time, whether what that foundation looks like and the structure, which I think we would all like to have that answer. At this point in time, there has been no clarification to that.
You know, if you had an opportunity to look at those SOPs and SOGs.
I I know that he's met twice with Mr. Gamos.
Good.
Um, to the extent of how much that has been completed.
Okay.
I I don't know. Today's primary purpose with Chief Hanson and myself was the LOA and to start working through applications.
Okay. Well, I suppose part of Norm's question is relative to plans and to get those SOGs and SOPs in place would be a significant leap forward towards developing a working plan.
Well, Steph, I trust you, Reiner.
Well, yeah, I have two questions. One is, at some point, we're going to need to go to to an election requesting a millage. And before we do that, we're going to need a budget and a realistic budget based on what, and then this tour is going to have to make some hard decisions for how we budget for this next fiscal year. Because there's no way, as I understand it, that we can expect if a millage passed at the next available election that we could get money to use until twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twice, excuse me, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year would be the earliest we could hope to have income that would support a budget realistically for that fire department, this fire department. And so those are two questions. The other question I have is, are we going to move forward and have we, I didn't see it here, I don't think. Are we going to get rid of one or both of the ambulances and look at other options for first responder?
Um, so what we do have, there have already been several discussions about the the sale of one, if not both ambulances. The last conversation was highlighted of first putting, as we've already had it set on the the list of disposable assets, both of those ambulances, to get rid of the mileage-high ambulance of the two. There's one, I think, that has already been pulled out of service that had roughly thirty-four thousand miles. That has been, today was actually the final day where they had Tellrad come and remove the eight hundred radio from that new ambulance to put in our old rescue unit that's in service. And then that's still, that was taken back to Station Three to be put in storage so that we don't continue to add miles to that. So, yes, there are talks of getting rid of one, if not both. There's also getting back to your your point of your first question of budget and a realistic one of how to present it and how to move forward, which will kind of tie into new business number nine. Because inherently, that's as the personnel committee had discussions that kind of leaped into other things. And we'll kind of come back to that whole spectrum of discussion of how to anticipate what our budgets look like, how our request should be formed, and what is that prioritization? So, that will be new business number nine. Any other questions about fire department? Obviously, we all have a lot of questions about the fire department, but at this point in time, because we're trying to make sure that there's a safe working environment.
And then the chief is just getting his feet underneath him. So.
Day eleven is today.
Right. So, you know, he's going to have a lot of input and everything. And that's the way we would like it to be. That's what we hired him for. And so we just need some time to get everything in a row.
And we, like I said, we will be coming back to a full spectrum discussion under new business nine, which is capital improvement plan. So, with that being said, any other discussion at this point with fire department? Next item of business, and Haley, could you ask Mr. McClellan to unmute himself? Or he can pin him or however you want to start. Okay. Well, good evening, Mr. McClellan.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for your time. I, this is, I, coming back to the table business of the the Brownfield redevelopment authority. Mr. McClellan owned and provided the documentation that we tabled that was all encompassing as to Brownfield. And really, at this point in time, and that's why there's also the email that was sent late and the clarification as to the hard copy on your desk. I guess, given that point of discussion, Mr. McClellan, us being as green as we are with BRAs, would you like to kind of introduce yourself and kind of give a quick synopsis as to what we're looking for?
Sure. I'd be happy to. Good evening, everyone. I'm Mac McClellan. I've been working in Brownfields for about twenty-four years, so I'm somewhat familiar with it. Excuse my kind of distorted camera. It happens that way in Zoom. I haven't quite figured out the settings. I have gained some weight in COVID, but my face isn't quite that fat. But I originally started in Brownfield. I was the deputy county administrator for Grand Traverse County. So, I have some familiarity with township government. I was a county, deputy county administrator for twelve years there. And started the Brownfield redevelopment authority in Grand Traverse County. We did most of the projects in downtown Traverse City there that when you go to Traverse, you'll see, found a particular passion in that and then got into the business of doing that. So, I now represent about eleven Brownfield authorities, have done quite a bit of work, as I noted in my information there, and done a lot of work on Eagle grants as well as EPA grants. I think when Nathan and I first talked and what I understood was, there was consideration of a Brownfield plan for the redevelopment of the Alpena Schools Transportation Center. And that was what my original kind of outline was for. That utilizes and is the primary tool of the Brownfield Authority, using Brownfield tax Financing to help fund certain extraordinary eligible activity costs, like environmental costs and demolition, for example. And so, what happens is you set the initial taxable value, which in this case would be zero. The activities are conducted. They're all approved in a Brownfield plan. The activities are conducted. And then the increased incremental taxes that are generated by the private investment are captured and then reimbursed for those extra extraordinary costs until those costs are paid off. It depends on the amount of eligible activities and the amount of investment in the project as to how long it takes to pay those off. The maximum is thirty years. Typically, communities want to look at a ten-to-fifteen-year payback. And that's the tool that's one, one of the key tools for the Brownfield Authority that could be used. My subsequent conversation with Nathan was that the developers are interested in applying for an Eagle Brownfield grant, which is a zero-match grant. There is no obligation or no financial obligation on the part of the township there and but is an agreement with the township between Eagle and the township. And then those benefits pass on to the developer to pay for their environmental cost and demolition and asbestos abatement costs. So, if I'm understanding the situation that the developers are applying on behalf of the township for an Eagle grant to cover those environmental costs and those demolition costs, it should cover most, all of the Brownfield costs that would be there. And really, there likely would not be a need for a Brownfield plan to cover the tax Financing. There may need to be something there, but that would cover most of the cost for the projects. One of the things that Eagle likes to have is a third-party consultant to represent the township if the primary environmental consultant is representing the developer. And I, you know, as that person, I would review all the documentation that the developer's environmental consultant is providing, all of the work plans, and work through the whole grant process, representing the township and your interest and making sure that everything is done appropriately. All of the grant contract conditions are met. All of the activities are actually eligible for reimbursement under the grant. And then all of the reporting that goes with the grant as well. So, that was kind of the clarification email that I had there is, and so those are the kind of two different components. Brownfield TIF, Taxual Financing, which has its whole other structure of a Brownfield plan that I laid out in the initial proposal. And then the Eagle Brownfield Grant, which is a much narrower focus. And as I mentioned in there, that that the kind of, you know, the cost and the activity is dependent on the complexity of the of the project, of the environmental response activities and the work plans, the communications that the authority of the township might want to have, and the effectiveness of the developer's environmental consultant. If they don't have a lot of experience, then it takes a little bit more time to walk them through the process and do that. ASTI is a well-experienced and well-qualified firm. And so, it should be just a matter of reviewing work plans, making some quick comments, taking a couple hours to review the work plans, if that's, doing some of the documentation, reviewing the reports that come out, and making sure that everything is done. So, I would imagine it'd be a relatively low level of effort. And I don't know what the total grant budget is or what the allocation is for the third-party consultant in the in the contract, but I'm pretty sure that we would be well under that that allocation in terms of expenses. All the expenses have to be done on a time and materials basis as well. So, with that, I'll kind of shut up and see if anybody's got any questions.
Are there any questions? Yes, trustee Reiner.
Well, I do, but it may not be a very intelligent question, but I just don't know nothing about this. And maybe I have to rely on Tim as well as Mac. The so the developer has the responsibility to pay the township back whatever we advance over a period of time. Is that my understanding, sir?
Actually, the the township would have a grant agreement with with Eagle. And then all of those kind of costs, the developer would be responsible to incur those costs, document those costs, submit those reports to the township. And to me, we'd review those. And then we'd advance those to Eagle. They would review those and approve those expenses, send the money back to the township, and the township would cut a check to the developer. And we'd have a, we have a development agreement that kind of lays that process out as well. But the township wouldn't be advancing any funds. The developer advances all the funds, and it's all on a reimbursement basis. So, the township would act as a as a pass-through or a flow-through with its with its costs covered.
So, there would be no direct relationship between the developer and the township in terms of over time us recovering any funds? Tax funds. I thought there was something about.
Yeah, that's that Brownfield TIF that that I talked about, about those about those tax funds. And if there was no Eagle grant, for example, and they had these these environmental costs as part of the project and the demolition costs, let's say they're five hundred thousand dollars. And so, that would be, you know, that would all be laid out in a in an upfront plan, in a budget, basically. And then the developer would incur those costs and document those costs. And then over time, with the increased taxable value that would be captured, would the the Brownfield Authority would capture those dollars and reimburse the authority. That's the whole tax increment financing piece. So, let's say, for example, they have five hundred thousand dollars of eligible activity costs, and their taxes increase to fifty thousand dollars per year. Those fifty thousand dollars would be captured and then reimbursed back to the developer for a period of ten years until those costs were recovered and paid off. And then after that point in time, they would go back to the taxing jurisdictions.
Okay. We're just not going to have tax coming to us for ten years.
Actually, in that circumstance, yes. But in this circumstance, Eagle is paying for all of those environmental costs. So, you would you would accrue and get those taxes as they're assessed and as as the millage rates apply, you'd get them immediately. This is a great opportunity or deal that you don't have to forego any future taxes because Eagle is going to be paying for the upfront costs for those expenses.
And we don't get any tax dollar now.
Correct.
We don't because it's school property.
School property.
So, you know.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Can you tell me, from the time that we start the process to the time that we're advancing money to a to a developer, what the usual timeline is?
Probably about four to six months.
Okay. Does that does that fall in line with what he wants to do, the developer wants to do, do you know?
Well, this has been, this is a unique to a large degree because even between my first email to Mac and subsequent emails, it went from a Brownfield three eighty-one plan to we're going to scrap that and just go because there was a mechanism that fell all in grant-capable dollars. So, it was a paradigm shift to go more so towards the grant. They have their own entity that is doing all the the work that Mr. McClellan laid out in his scope of services for an all-encompassing Brownfield. They are foot on the gas with this one. That's henceforth. We already, at our last board meeting, approved the the board members for the Brownfield Authority. Now, today is the approval of Mr. McClellan's professional abilities as a consultant, third-party consultant to oversee this project because all the other materials have been accomplished by and retained by the developer in that firm. So, today, I guess I would be outside and I want, because we're all green to Brownfields.
Green to Brownfields.
Green, green and brown. Hey, that's Bowling Green, except for Better State. So, if there are any questions, yes.
So, is this something that we can use on other development as well?
So, yeah, could you add to that? So, let's say in this, all these project, we encapsulate out of that grant the maximum five percent, and it turns out to be an arbitrary number. Let's just say fifty thousand dollars. The services that you would render to be the independent third party, let's also just stay generic, are at two thousand dollars. With that remaining forty-eight thousand, that actually can be used, well, one has to be used to provide administrative function for the life of of that. But then the remaining, could, my question is, can that, those remaining monies be used as kind of seed capital for other future Brownfield activities?
And the simple answer is no. All of the, all of the funds that the grant would provide are limited to this project. So, whatever your administrative actual costs are, and we want to, you know, you have to lay out the hours and the time, and that's done. I could talk for a moment about how that seed money works in the Brownfield TIF activity. But but the answer to that question is, it's all on a time and material and actual expense basis for the grant. And there is no ability to take any of those grant funds and use it on other projects. You'd have to separate that out.
Can this, can this be used as a mechanism to drive more development in here on other projects?
Brownfield Authority.
Oh, yeah. Well, and especially when we get into the TIF scenarios where you create districts, that's when you can really.
Yep, exactly. And I will say that, you know, one of the things that we can do is that we can spend a little bit of time helping build the capacity of the Brownfield Authority, talking a little bit about how Brownfield TIF through this process, you know, working through that, through the grants, you know, in terms of those conversations and explanations. So, I can help explain that. We can set up, you know, some policies and procedures and application process and talk a little bit about how to make that, you know, as straightforward and simple as possible while complying with all the stipulations of the Act. One of the things that the Brownfield TIF was, that you may have heard about that seed money being provided, is, let's say there was that five hundred thousand dollar expense there and paid off over ten years. The township, the Brownfield Authority has the ability to capture additional taxes equal to what was originally spent to be able to go into a local Brownfield revolving fund for projects that can be used throughout the township for any of those kinds of things. Now, that happens after you've had a couple of projects and, you know, they they tend to build those dollars. But that's that may be where you have heard about that seed money and being able to look at other projects as the local Brownfield revolving fund under the Brownfield TIF process. So, there's really, those are the two distinct areas for financing. One is Brownfield TIF, where the developer has to come up with the funds upfront, and then they're paid out over an extended period of time. And the second is this Eagle Grant that is a competitive grant process that pays for those upfront. And then the township and all the taxing jurisdictions reap that benefit of the of all that of that private development almost immediately.
Are there any other questions for Mr. McClellan?
Are we needing a motion tonight?
Yes, I would like to move, I would entertain a motion to secure Mr. McClellan's services for at the rate of a hundred and twenty dollars per hour, including mileage approved at the IRS rate, to move forward with providing technical review and administrative services for the Alpena Public Schools project.
I'll support it.
We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
Just for, just so, I'm sorry, just so I.
Oh, let Laura. Laura.
I guess, how long do we think this is going to take? Like, how much money are we possibly talking about at a hundred and twenty dollars an hour plus mileage? I mean, should we cap it at some point up to X amount? I mean.
Well, I guess I'd leave that to his professional.
Forty hours? If it takes six months to do this? Or, I mean, do you have any kind of an idea?
Yeah, I'll provide an idea. It's it's a little bit dependent. I mean, I I can't imagine in all of those funds would be paid for through the grant as well for that. And, you know, I can't incur the expenses until the grant, but I'm willing to kind of help through and work through that, you know, on my own. So, as soon as the grant is, current contract is signed, we can begin those services. I I really can't imagine this would be more than ten thousand dollars. You know, working through a two-year process for the whole redevelopment and all of the documentation. It, I honestly, I mean, I think I've seen the phase-two report, so I have an idea about what the levels of contamination are. But I don't know all the plans and all the activities. But I I would be surprised if it's more than that. And as I mentioned, all of that would be inclusive within the grant itself. So, wouldn't be dollars from the township.
Okay, so we would, we would be reimbursed?
Yes.
And it would come, okay.
It all come out of the glen.
Yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
I was just going to say that this is a net zero expense to the township.
Correct.
Yeah.
Especially in the grant scenario. I mean, so, this is kind of a win-win. We we get the ability to clean up and see some development that will be taxable.
Yeah.
So, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion?
So, do we have an idea what we'd be paying it out of, what GL?
Well, it'll be a GL that would be created by the Brownfield as we've, so as it stands right now, as as Mr. McClellan said, we also, his services would be on hold until that grant is approved. Or at least to to that bearing effect where payment would be identified. But that's where I kind of asked, with the chart of accounts, make sure that we have that GL set up. We know, I know that we have one that's already listed as as MEDC that we've never used. So, maybe with the tip of the hat by some people in this room and other people that work our books, we can identify that GL.
Well, I guess that was, what's, so different questions of them trying to get at is, what is the turnaround time? In other words, is it in the same fiscal year? Is it immediate? Is it, do we get the money back from the grant? Is it billed to the grant? You know, those kinds of things.
Yeah. Well, and the last, yeah, Mr. McClellan, I'll leave that to you and your expertise.
Yeah, in all the expenses, including my expenses, you know, you wouldn't need to pay upfront. We can, it it's, they're all expended, expended by the developer for those actual eligible environmental activities and the demolition that they would do. They would turn in that documentation of those expenses. They even have to show proof of payment. But they do for that. And and there's a, there's a quarter lag time. I'll say that we can can do that. And so, we submit all of that stuff to the state. They review it. They approve the expense. They send the check back to the township. And then the township pays the developer. The same would be true with my expenses. Those would all be logged up. We'd have the invoices. You wouldn't have any obligation to pay that. We'd submit that as documentation. We'd submit that as documentation to the state. They'd review it. They'd approve it. Send the, the dollars back to the state that would include those expenses and then you would pay me for that. So there isn't any cash out, any cash outlay for, for the township.
Yeah, we're just the fiduciary. We're an in and out revolving. So it really is an exciting prospect. With that being said, any other discussions or questions while we have Mr. McCollum with us this evening?
You can call me Mac, that's fine.
Now that you said that. So roll call vote, if there's no other discussion, please.
Trustee Renner.
Yes.
Trustee Polley.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Bert Flavich, yes. Treasurer, Valerie Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Supervisor Skewey.
Yes. So we will keep you posted, Mac, as to that project. Everything now from here on forward with the developer, you'll be CC'd on. I'm looking at scheduling a, the first meeting ever of our Brownfield Authority Board. It looks like early week of October. So when that is confirmed, you will also be invited to that to kind of help stem some conversation and give us sound direction.
Great. And I would be happy, you know, kind of have a standard, you know, presentation that I can modify for the township. You know, if it's Zoom, you know, I can do that real easily and and kind of give the authority a little bit of background. I'm happy to do that. I have, I actually did a one eight-hour training session one time, so I won't take that long. But, but I just have a fifteen or twenty minute presentation that might be helpful to provide some background to the authority.
Appreciate it, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Look forward to working with everybody. All right. We'll talk to you soon. Thanks.
Moving into new business, um, our favorite report of the year and Chelsea. Podium mic is on, correct? Okay.
Good evening. I'm Chelsea McConnell from Stray Lamp and Transline. I'm here to go over the twenty twenty-one fiscal year audit report. So the first thing I'm going to go over are the letters that are not bound into the report. The first one is titled Communication with Those Charged with Governance, which is you, the board. So management is responsible for the selection and appropriate accounting policies. And I just wanted to point out here that there were two new GASB statements that were implemented this year. The first one was GASB eighty-four fiduciary activities and the second one was GASB number eighty-eight, which was, which is related to debt disclosures. And we'll kind of take a look at some of the changes that happened from the implementation of those as we move into the report. But I just wanted to point that out that anything new will be disclosed here in this letter. As you go down before the bullet points, it talks about accounting estimates. So it's necessary to make estimates within financial statements to have them be to have them be appropriately stated with all. I'm sorry, um, to be appropriately stated with accounting standards. So I just wanted to point out that some of the sensitive estimates that there are in the financial statements. So the first one has to do with capital assets. So those are estimates because we estimate the useful life of those assets and then they're depreciated over that useful life. There's also accrued compensated absences, which are based, it is an estimate based on hourly rates or salaries at the end of the fiscal year, which could change as that time is used. There is the, probably the most sensitive is regarding the litigation in the water and sewer fund. And then there's the allowance for doubtful accounts, which that is always an estimate because you never really know what that number is going to be. Moving on to the next page, it also talks about the most sensitive disclosures in the financial statements. So you will see there no eleven is pointed out, which also has to do with litigation in the water and sewer fund. That's just a sensitive disclosure because we really don't know that, what the outcome's going to be. I am happy to say that we did not encounter any difficulties in performing the audit. There are not any uncorrected misstatements. We didn't have any disagreements with management. And if you go to the third page, you'll see upcoming standards. I don't think that most of these upcoming GASB statements are going to affect the township much. Releases may affect, will probably affect the township slightly, but we have still one more fiscal year. So that won't be till fiscal year end twenty twenty-three that that's going to be implemented. Now, the next letter that we're going to go over is matters for management consideration. So we consider internal controls when performing an audit, but we don't, it's a very limited scope. We don't, there could be internal control deficiencies that exist that we don't identify because we aren't there to, you know, audit the system of internal controls. Although we assess them to base our risk assessments on. Now, a material weakness is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control such that a reasonable possibility that a material misstatement would be in the financial statements and not be prevented or detected on a timely basis. And a significant deficiency is a combination, is a deficiency or a combination of deficiencies in internal control that is less severe than a material weakness, but it is important enough to merit the attention of those charged with governance. So there were no changes in this letter from the prior audit. Everything stayed the same. A couple of these are kind of boilerplate. So the financial statement preparation and segregation of duties, you'll find those in almost every governmental audit report. In fact, when we submit audits to the state, they ask for their findings other than these two. Even the state doesn't care about these because they're so generic. There were material audit adjustments posted. I think we had around forty-three adjusting journal entries this year. They were given to management. Management has approved them and they have all been posted in these financial statements. So moving on to the, the bound report. So here on, on pages one and two, you'll find the audit opinion. So this is actually the only two pages that are Stray Lamp and Translines. If you read the first sentence, under management's responsibility for the financial statements, management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statement in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. With that being said, it's very common for auditors to assist with financial statement preparation, probably around ninety-five percent of the time. Auditors assist with that on a test service. So that's a very common thing for us to do. I also like to just give a very generic synopsis of exactly what we do during the audit because sometimes I think there's misconceptions. So at the conclusion of the audit, we opine on the, on whether we believe the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. Materiality is a concept utilized by auditors. We also assess various risks, as I said, in internal controls. And after we make these risk assessments, have a basis of materiality, we then plan and perform the audit. During the audit process, we obtain audit evidence that is sufficient and appropriate and provides us the basis for our audit opinion that we issue. So we believe we have obtained sufficient and appropriate audit evidence for our audit opinion. So on page two, you'll see at the summary of opinions. These are also have not changed since the prior year. So business type activities in the business type fund, the opinion is qualified. So under the basis for qualified opinion paragraph there, you'll see the reasoning why, which obviously the reason why has not changed either. So the reason that though, that is qualified is the capital asset. So when we took over the audit, we couldn't get the schedule of capital assets. So we basically have created the schedule from that point on and we know what those assets are. But that's the assets from prior is a very material number. So the fact that we don't really know what's on that schedule, what's fully depreciated, what that depreciation number should be, it could change the assets net position and expenses in the business type fund and business type activities. So for that reason, we have to qualify that opinion. All the other opinions are unmodified, which means we believe the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects in all of those. Now I will just go over the statements a little bit. So on page eleven to thirteen, you'll find your government wide statements. So the government wide statements are on the full accrual basis of accounting, which is very similar to a private sector company. It differs from the governmental fund statements that we'll review later that are on the modified accrual basis and focus on how money flows in and out and the balances left at year end. So the cash in the governmental activities actually increased about five hundred thousand dollars. Overall liabilities and deferred inflows of resources decreased about four hundred and sixty-five thousand, which most of that decrease was due to a decrease in debt, which was around three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Net position of, of the primary government increased a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars or one point five percent over the prior year. Revenue actually stayed really stable with fiscal year twenty. It decreased a small amount, about eighty-three thousand. But expenses decreased about two hundred and eighty thousand. The primary expenses that decreased would be, were in public safety, which decreased about a hundred and sixty-five thousand. That was primarily payroll. Payroll went down for public safety about a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that includes, you know, all of your fringe benefits and everything like that. Public works also decreased about a hundred and eight thousand dollars and that is, that's just, there was less road projects and less payments to the Opina County Road Commission, which led to that decrease. Now, moving on to the fund statements. On page fourteen and sixteen, you'll find the two governmental fund statements. And on fifteen and seventeen, you're going to see the reconciliations between that, those full accruals statements and these modified accrual statements. So the general fund ended the year with an increase in fund balance of about two hundred and forty thousand with unassigned fund balance increasing about two hundred and eighteen thousand over twenty twenty. One important ratio to look at to measure the general fund's health is the number of days of expenditures there are in that unassigned fund balance. So the Government Finance Officers Association recommends no less than two months for this financial measure. At the end of fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there was about two hundred and seventy-three days. And at the end of twenty twenty was about a hundred and eighty-seven days. So it increased eighty-six days and was well over that threshold, showing that the general fund is in really good fiscal health. Now on page seventeen, this is the reconciliate, one of the reconciliations between the two statements. You'll see here that the two most significant items that affect this would be your capital assets and the debt. And the reason for having to show these on the two different bases of accounting stemmed from GASB thirty-four, which was implemented quite some time ago. Now, the Water and Sewer Fund was very similar to twenty twenty. Revenue and expenses pretty much stayed relatively consistent. There was a decrease in that position during twenty twenty-one of about three hundred and five thousand, which was actually an increase over twenty twenty of about fifteen thousand. So as you can see there, only fifteen thousand dollars different between the two fiscal years. It stayed very, very consistent. Now, page twenty-two and twenty-three. This is the fiduciary fund statement. So as I mentioned previously, we implemented GASB eighty-four pertaining to fiduciary activities. Overall, GASB eighty-four didn't affect the township significantly. There was nothing that needed to move out of this fiduciary fund and was no longer considered fiduciary. But the statements did change. So the statement on page twenty-two was previously called the Statement of Fiduciary Assets and Liabilities, and it's now the Statement of Fiduciary Net Position. And then there was an addition of the Statement of Changes in Fiduciary Net Position that was not previously required for this one. Now just moving into just a couple of things in the notes. So on page thirty-five, the long-term debt note starts. Um, so as I mentioned, GASB statement number eighty-eight was also implemented. So this statement didn't change anything in the financial statements themselves, but it did change requirements for note disclosures for debt. So you now had to split your debt between direct borrowings and direct placement and other debt. So all of the governmental activities, long-term debt fell into that direct borrowings and direct placements and all of the business type activities, which is on the next page, fell into other debt. That really was the most significant item that changed in the note disclosures due to that implementation. And then note eleven on page thirty-eight, as I previously mentioned, this note discusses the Water and Sewer Fund litigation. This note really didn't change much from fiscal year twenty twenties report either. Not too much happened in the case since then. So I think there may have been a couple of sentences added at the end, but there just not much changed in that. So, and the way that was recorded all remain the same as well. Um, here, there are a couple of subsequent events. So the COVID subsequent event, that's just kind of become a generic subsequent event disclosed in almost, in all audits. Just because it's so unknown and nobody really knows what's going to happen with COVID. How is the pandemic going to affect different entities? So that paragraph's just pretty much in every audit right now. There was also an installment purchase for a new fire truck for about four hundred and fifty thousand. And then the township was also awarded nine, about nine hundred and sixteen thousand dollars of federal funds through the American Rescue Plan Act. Now those funds do have restrictions on how they can be spent. So that's just one thing to note on it. And I just want to take a second to just commend Michelle and Laura on a great job and getting us everything that we need. And thank you guys. And you guys are always great to work with. Oh, thank you.
Seems like every year it gets shorter.
Yes, it has. Yeah, we've come a very long way. Yeah. Does anyone have any questions on the report?
Would you try to, on page thirty-eight, note number eleven. The, I guess the late fees and charges of some six point five million. That's just arbitrary, that's just a, just a number that is established by some eighteen percent interest rate or whatever the city may charge for, for those funds that they feel that are, are due them. And this number is, is typically just a zeroed out number somewhere along the line. That's not a debt that we owe. That is a, just a, just an aggregated number.
Correct. Yeah. So that six point five million isn't recorded anywhere. I don't think that it's expected that that's going to have to be paid at all. The attorneys, they, we send them legal letters out in regards to this matter and they have, I don't think they expect that to have to be paid. So right now it's just here as a note disclosure to disclose that information.
So that, so I guess what I'm saying is it's really nothing more than if, if, if somebody doesn't pay their water bill, they'll get a late fee and then some accrued interest somewhere along the line. And so you've just extrapolated that out over a period of time.
Um, well, we get it off of the city's actual invoices that they bill.
Quarterly bill.
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, we could send you a copy of the quarterly bill here from the city. It's an eye opener.
No, I'm good.
Are there any questions for Chelsea? I, I would like to make one comment as to a, a finding that's been on our, on our audit from twenty sixteen on is, and to give an update is trustee Lappin and I worked with expanding engineering services with our contract with F and B. So for asset management plan, that is now a stipulation of Eagle for water suppliers. That process has started. So actually, hopefully for our subsequent audit, we will no longer have that as a finding.
You mean the qualification?
Yeah, the qualified. Yep.
I thought we talked about that. This is the first time I've had to. Go through one of these.
I just got a letter today. Oh, so. They've started part of it. They're basically, what they're doing is we've had parts of the data. They're just collecting all the, the existing data, seeing where gaps that we have. And then figure out how to, how to splice that.
Yeah, I mean, if, as you've said earlier, for the meeting, if you're going back to try to recapture assets in the ground, we won't have any way to find out what the capitalized cost of those were. Is that a necessary element to this? To know what the capitalized cost was? I mean, we don't have.
At the rate of depreciation, I think that, that existing cost to, I mean, because you've gone, gone back to fiscals and started your own process of depreciation from that point because of material weakness. But now we're looking at encompassing all. And so, yeah, the capitalized cost would obviously have to look at implementation year and what rate of depre- implementation year and what rate of depreciation that asset has and figure out what that, that cost is.
But those numbers are going to be estimates, not actual numbers, correct?
Yeah.
Based on.
Yeah. I don't think he, moving forward, we can, we can.
Well, we know what our costs are now because keep track of.
It's a beautiful thing when you have a professionalized thing firm helping us.
In the past, those were documented somewhere.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. Remember, as I recall, somewhere along the line, that was done, but it's just the auditor that did it misplaced it?
We tried to get that from them. I don't know how long. We tried, how many letters we sent. I know we made numerous and numerous attempts. I mean, I think you've sent letters.
Two years.
Yeah, we tried. Yeah, I was going to say, I know we tried for the first year audit and then even the second year, we were trying to get it still. And we just.
The township attorney wrestles with them too. Just, just completely out of contact. They were not cooperative at all.
Any other questions while we have Chelsea's attention? No, I'd just like to say thanks again. Thanks. Wonderful report. And we'll be setting up appointments for next year. Yes, Lauren.
I have one question. So it's been discussed at our board table that at every meeting, I do the payment of bills. And it gets emailed out to everybody. I get three signatures from board members. And it's been questioned, is this necessary? So I'm asking you, I mean, I do it because we get three signatures, you know, from other board members, like several clerk and I. But going forward.
And it's for just all the bills listed out?
Right, the bills from.
And they all get a copy and then there's the motion to approve them also. Probably you don't need to get the three signatures, I would say.
The, the checks and balances here, as I understand it, is that, you know, one determines the bill, you get the bills and one of you, okay, but there's between the two of you, there's a check and a balance because one's writing the check and one's.
And department heads also get bills and have to approve them too before they're paid.
I mean, I've just always, since I started, did a cover letter, sent them out to everybody, got their signatures. And I mean, so it's been asked before and I thought, well, I'll ask you. And then that will determine whether or not we continue that.
Yeah, well, we may not need to sign that, but we'd like to see that.
Yes. Are there any other questions before we allow you to enjoy the rest of your evening?
Thank you, Chelsea. You're welcome. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving forward is next item of business is the F and B operations and their maintenance allowance reports for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Bear in mind that this contract is in August to August. But nonetheless, what we have found in our first full year of contracted services is that we have put an extreme amount of money back into our infrastructure. Um, which I think, I know that I've expressed and we've discussed it momentarily at a previous board meeting. And at our next board meeting, I've already asked for head counsel, Mr. Fahey, to make himself available for potential closed session of discussions of various types in nature. But one part of the conversation is water rates and how we need to look at what our expenditures are overlaid with the CIP versus a rate study and how to move forward. Because one of the mechanisms that we haven't done in some time is a water rate increase. Obviously, we're still in, in having positive discussions with the city as to an authority. Um, but that being said, we're still a, a water provider. The city had increased their rates effective their budget in July of this year. Um, and I think that we'll be coming back to this topic of water rates in a very thorough discussion at our subsequent board meeting. Because obviously our, our margins are dwindling as they continue to raise their rates and ours have been stagnant for quite some time, I believe nearly October of twenty eighteen. Uh, we have to not let this slip through the cracks any longer. Make a sound decision as a board as to how to make, ensure that we have proper revenue streams for the energy. Um, but we have a breakout, Kath, isn't it here? This. Is she, oh, she's by phone?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Nguyen, are you on the telephone?
Hello.
Hello, Ms. Nguyen. We can hear you. We're discussing the maintenance allowance report. So if you would like to give a synopsis to the board, the table is yours, ma'am.
Okay, the, the maintenance allowance report is laid out in two different formats. One is chronological. So you can see the flow of projects that have been completed, when they occurred and, and those itemized costs. And then I also, for the sake of discussion in regard to the water rate going forward, separate that out in a second fashion into basically categories. Uh, the first one being the water service repairs and the amount of associated costs. Um, obviously, that is the most significant cost that has been incurred in the fiscal, or in the contract year twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one. Um, and I don't have it in front of me because I'm driving, which is why I'm on the phone. But I know it was a, in excess, in excess of three hundred and forty thousand dollars spent on water service repairs, restoration of those sites, paving repairs. Um, you know, road repairs, bringing things back up to road commission standards. Um, when paving was replaced, and it's, it's quite a substantial amount. Um, and I don't foresee this reducing potentially in future years. What we've observed over the last year is that um, a lot of the materials that were used when the water services were initially installed, where they use plastic. And what is happening is over time, where that plastic service line is connected to the metal corporation on the water main or at the curb stop, that, that's where it's failing. The wa, the plastic is getting brittle and cracking and causing those leaks. All of, for the majority of the system is made with the same materials and is around the same age. So we anticipate that that trend will continue going forward.
And I can attest to that. Um, we are, the, the blue poly was, was faulty to begin with that they utilized. The township didn't take the opportunity to hop on a class action suit because of the faulty material. So that is a, a huge, huge issue that we're facing.
Are these distribution lines or are these service lines?
These are the service lines off the main, independent homes or businesses, correct?
So those lines, each homeowner bearing that expense or not?
No, well, so by our water ordinance, our responsibility is from the main to the curb stop. From the curb stop itself into the home is the owner's responsibility. Um, some of the leaks that we've gone out on have been on the opposite side of the curb stop. Uh, but that also affords us the ability when that hole is dug, if we're seeing the materials that could cause issues downstream. Usually nine times out of ten, and correct me if I'm wrong, Kath, if, if we're seeing an opportunity to fix something proactively, once a hole is exposed, we've moved forward with replacement of K copper for those service lines.
That's correct. And, and the majority of the leaks that are listed are on the township side. Um, I would say probably ninety percent of those, and quite a few of them have been at the main. Um, what has happened, if you were to visualize this, is the water main, the corporation, which is um, the, the tap into the main itself. And then there's like a loop of service line that comes up and then is, is moved back down to get it below the frost line. And so where there's like a gooseneck kind of a configuration, it's putting a lot of tension on that plastic line. Um, and that's where it's failing. And, um, you know, and, and the way past those goosenecks um, were made out of lead, which obviously we don't want to do, and, and it's illegal now, of course. Uh, but that's why they use that material because of the soft and pliable. Um, and so with that kind of a loop at the, at the main end of the, the water main end of the line, putting a lot of tension on that plastic where it's connected to the metal, and that's where the majority of the failures are occurring is at the water main.
So, so then I'm trying to visualize this. So what we're saying is the customer doesn't tap to the main, they tap to a curb stop and the curb stop is somewhere between their house and the water.
Yeah, so often, oftentimes the curb stop itself is, as Ms. Nguyen explained, there's, there's a corporation that's tapped into the main that has the ability to turn on and off. But that is never exposed until the hole is actually exposed. From that corporation tap from the main, you go into the right away typically is where the curb stop is. Um, that is our external means for turning on and off services. Uh, and then there's the only other control for flow is, is shut offs before and after a meter. Um, so a lot of these are, as, as Ms. Nguyen says, they're tapped either directly off the top of the main, which then inherently, when you put that plastic three-quarter inch poly line in, as it comes up, it has to bend down. And that bend is tensioning. And that's where a lot of failures are happening because it becomes brittle. Um, last year exacerbated, hopefully exacerbated some of these issues because of the high water table, um, which creates a higher level of friction subsurface. Um, and then obviously it impedes the structural integrity of, of the line itself. Um, so a lot of these are right there under roads, which then inherently has additional cost because then we are obligated to repair the road to Alpena County Road Commission standards. Um, and then we've been utilizing, we've actually improved that process as well, Kath. Uh, we've used here in engineering to make sure that we're hitting density tests so that we have as much mitigating data saying that we've done everything to the best of our abilities to repair this road to the standards. And kind of move forward. But any, any side road that you go down, where you see a repair, oftentimes that settles. Um, and that's at, at a place of a repaired line. So I, I agree with Ms. Nguyen in regards to the vast majority, as we're talking prior to this meeting. A vast majority of our infrastructure was implemented between seventy-seven and eighty-one. And all use the same materials. So we're, we should be forecasting, and that's where we'll be reevaluating our, our CIP and doing an overlay, as you spoke earlier, about what we should anticipate moving forward with rates to encompass the expenses that we know that we're going to have. Any questions for Ms. Nguyen? Uh, do you have anything else to add, Ms. Nguyen?
No, I don't. Um, I will be at the next board meeting in October via Zoom. And Mark Barachi, one of our operators slash engineers is also planning on attending that meeting to further the conversation in regard to this. So if there are questions at that time in regard to the capital plan or, or budget considerations, we can go over them then.
Okay, with that being said, if we have no other questions for Ms. Nguyen, we do have to look at making this account whole in terms of our, our balance of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents, uh, which we're going to have to make an amendment to, I think, a GL to make said expenditure. Um, you have it in front of you. Do you have?
Would you do it on maintenance on system?
Yep.
There's about a hundred and twenty-nine, hundred and thirty thousand in that one right now.
Okay.
So we wouldn't have to take some money out of another.
So. We have one twenty-nine, eight, five, five. As it stands right now, I, I guess my, my consideration would be to make a budget amendment allocating thirty thousand dollars uh, right now, just from GL five-nine-two-one-zero-zero-eight-zero-one-point-zero-zero-zero uh, to transfer. Oh, we need.
We're going to have enough in there to pay F and B for their contract? Because that's where we paid that out of.
Well, and then that's why we're going to be coming right back to that conversation at our subsequent meeting of increase of rates because we're going to have to refund. I, I, I'm open to all suggestions at this point, but that's the easiest.
What is this number? Or you could take it out of legal, or do you think it is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand in legal?
Are we up to date on, on, is, is up to date as we can be on legal? Because we know we were pretty.
So that would be actually a better recommendation. So.
What numbers that?
From.
Legal?
Yeah.
So I guess.
You just take the exact amount we need out of there.
I mean, for now, we got six more months.
Yeah, we're in six more months.
So.
We're going to have more coming out of maintenance.
Yes. So I guess we can do it in two parts. I would entertain a motion to allow a budget amendment of a, a debit of thirty thousand to come out of five-nine-two-one-zero-zero-seven-two-six-one-one-one to the tune of thirty thousand dollars to be credited to GL five-nine-two-one-zero-zero-seven-five-four-point-zero-zero-zero. Is there a motion to that effect?
I will make that motion.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported to make a budget amendment transferring thirty thousand dollars from GL seven-two-six-point-zero-zero-zero legal to GL seven-five-four-point-zero-zero-zero maintenance on system to make that account adequate enough to make payment.
So then I were going to.
So, so.
Okay.
So, uh, we have a motion and support. Further discussion on the budget amendment?
What is balance? What, what would be the approximate balance in legal?
Oh, thirty thousand, that'd be.
One hundred and forty-eight.
About a hundred and forty-seven.
Yep, one forty-seven.
All right, okay.
Yep. Uh, no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. I now I'd entertain a motion to make payment of the operating maintenance spending of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents to come out of GL five-nine-two-one-zero-zero-seven-five-four-point-zero-zero-zero.
To F and B.
To F and B.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table to make payment of one hundred and fifty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-five cents. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Yeah, common numbers.
Yeah, from, from what.
We're going to pay it out of five-nine-two-one-hundred-seven-five-four-zero-zero-zero, which is maintenance on system.
Okay.
There's no other discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowell.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Uh, moving forward in the agenda is on the, in addition to the disposal of fixed asset list, I'd entertain a motion to add the turnout gear of former employees Honeycutt and Piper to the list of fixed assets for disposal. We have a motion on the table to add sets of, two sets of turnout gear to the disposal list. Is there support?
Support. Support.
We have support. Further discussion, trustee Paul.
Uh are these no longer useful?
Uh these are actually the the PPE and turnout gear that uh they both have uh since they took employment with the city.
But what I'm saying, these, we're getting rid of them. We're on disposal, but I don't know, no longer usable.
No, they are usable. They're just not usable to our department. Uh so at this point in time, their usable life is in. Service where they're at, so this would be uh.
So custom made.
Yeah.
These were. We're disposing them to them.
Yes.
But are we selling them?
We're just adding them to the list.
Right now, we're just adding them to the list. That was just an explanation of. So we have, we had a motion and support. Any further discussion? Uh a roll call please.
Clerk Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Um the next item is um the contract for building official services. Um Mr. Polly is with us this evening. Uh Tim, did you want to just kind of highlight? I think we kind of had some discussion and clarification as to.
No, I'm fine with it. I would say the biggest change is uh the uh amount uh to be paid for the contract. Uh I'm sure that's commensurate with the experience and and also if you're probably a building official.
Yep, he's a building official. We've also included zoning enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
Um within that, um and that's been the sliding scale as uh Mr. Gilman uh tries. His darnedest to to hit the retirement wall again. Um his salary, as we've already uh addressed at a previous meeting. Has decreased and Mr. Polly's is increasing. Uh the next move would probably be another potential increase for Mr. Polly. Um where then at that point in time, Mr. Polly would actually uh independently hire Mr. Gilman under his licensure. Um but that would be a a down the road conversation. As it stands, uh with the increase of abilities and his licensure. There is now would be a a flat monthly fee of three thousand dollars uh for those services. Um is there a motion to approve the building official contract? We have a motion on the table. Is there support? It's been moved and supported. Any further discussion? Yes, Ms. Ellery Summers.
I have a couple of questions. Um so. Currently, Nathan, you're the township zoning administrator, correct?
I've, yeah, I've been pro bono zoning administrator now for.
So Kevin will then be the new administrator or just enforcement?
Ri- right now, it's enforced. Yeah, so and to to that point. I'm, I want to, as Don kind of helped Kevin get associated with the building aspect. Now, this next phase is I'm going to start introducing more zoning administrations uh to Kevin because inherently that's. Never been my job title, so I've, as time progresses and his confidence continues to grow under our ordinance. One forty two and the zoning, he will actually kind of take more of that role, so yes.
Okay, so this is written correctly, done, one of number nine and eleven, because you would be the administrator and you would be the enforcement.
Sure, at this point in time, and then maybe like I said, the next phase would be if he's comfortable with that role. That would be another expansion of those duties.
Okay, just have a couple more things. Um on the cover, it says contract, you know, the title. Contract for Building Official Services. Should that also have a slash zoning enforcement after that?
No, it's, I mean, I'll leave that to Tim, but if it's if it's in the body of the document as a task to be completed.
Yeah, it's official title, building official, so we're good there.
Okay, number seven. Um in addition, the building official will assist the township clerk in developing budgets for the building department as needed. Should that be supervisor?
It it would be. That could be upon uh a friendly amendment. That would be the only language change.
And currently, um. We're paying fifteen hundred to Kevin, so it would be increased to three thousand, just for clarification. And then the um second page at the bottom, um about the liability, not less than, and it looks like a S and I. That's really one million. Michelle and I reviewed it before.
Yeah, when the PDF converted it, it didn't convert a couple of things.
Just so Steve would know, because I figured Steve would ask that question.
Why are you stealing trustee Lappin's thunder?
Jeez Louise.
Okay, that was all I have.
Okay. Um so uh to the trustee Polly, would you be friendly to uh a friendly amendment to uh cor- correct? Uh section seven in this to make the correction from township clerk to township supervisor?
Yes.
Are you friendly with that amendment? And to the uh support uh trustee Reinhardt?
And correct the SI to one million.
And correct, yeah, with both corrections, the SI.
One seven one E is being taken out here too.
It converted really.
So we 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 have, we have a PDF conversion issue here.
Well, there's a lot of periods where there should be and commas.
So then let's, I want to make sure that we're all on the same page. In the first page, seven, uh the change in correction would, under a friendly amendment, would be township supervisor. Uh page two, uh section twelve subsection B, uh striking one seven one subsection E from that uh paragraph. And then in the final paragraph, second line, end of the second line, uh C is yes for in Espanol. Um but it's actually to be one million dollars. That would be the correction. So there are three corrections with those.
Suppose you might as well change the, on the last. It says. I am, it's further agreed and understood.
Yeah, it should be.
Well, it's supposed to be another correction that Mr. Lappin found, so we have four. So.
Like in addition, there's a period, it should be a comma.
So. Barring the grammatical.
Or grammatical.
Or the phonetic, yes. Um both of those, uh we have, with those corrections being stated, trustee Polly, are you friendly to? Your original motion with those corrections?
Yes, I am.
And to the supporter of said motion, you are as well.
Sure.
Copy that. Uh any other discussion? That's a negative. Uh roll call please.
Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Clavitch, yes. Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Keep up the good work, Kevin. I continue to get get uh positive reports of uh his ability thus far in the field. Um so thank you very much for your service. Um moving forward in the agenda, uh Michelle, would you like to kind of touch on the?
Yeah, I talked to ten ten because currently we do not use encrypted email. Um the only two people who really need it is Haley and I, as we are sending forms with employee social security, dates of birth. Personal information through email, especially with onboarding new employees. Start to ten ten, they gave me this estimate, it's sixteen dollars for each of us extra a month to have encrypted email. Plus, there could be a possible charge of three hundred and eighty four for them to set it up. I highly suggest we do go to encrypted email because it kind of leaves us open if we send an email that's got personal information in it and gets. I think it's good security for an extra thirty two dollars a month.
We get like, are you gonna get like two emails, one is the email, another the next one?
Yes, but you won't always get that from us. Only, we're only use the secure when we're sending that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to put like secure in the message. In the subject line and then it will send it secure.
Sixteen dollars for each email address?
Yes.
Wouldn't be for all of us, it'd just be.
No, it's just for Haley and I, so it's an additional thirty two dollars a month.
Oh.
It was four and now it's twenty, so an extra sixteen is what she said.
Yeah.
Well, I mean. Definitely an open door there, so.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I just.
I make a motion that we approve the expenditure of not, not more than six hundred and sixty nine dollars to the uh. Quote is presented by ten ten technologies.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support.
And we have a motion and support. Further discussion? And I, that that GL of expenditure will be, how are we gonna this, is that just gonna be part of the monthly? Where now you just have that additional.
Monthly IT that gets spread out by each department.
So then your your department will just have a monthly forty dollars extra or thirty two dollars.
Thirty two dollars extra will go to.
Okay. So then, okay, uh with that being said, any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call please.
Trustee Crowe.
Yes.
Trustee Reiner.
Yes.
Trustee Polly.
Yes.
Trustee Lappin.
Yes.
Dirk Clavitch, yes. Treasure Ellery Summers.
Yes.
Supervisor Skitty.
Yes. Uh well, continue your positive role, Ms. Clavitch.
Um, we've been looking for like a time clock that would merge with BSNA. There aren't a lot. But Time Clock Plus does. It's software that people would clock in and out. And also in and out when they go on breaks and lunch. It also would be used for scheduling the fire department. Could you, we'll use it for their scheduling. It will also um. Currently, people have to fill out a pay time off request form. They can do that all online. It goes to the department head. Their department head can approve it online. Um it would also show like if, we we could set up rules, like if Laura is off, Rhonda couldn't take that day off. So it would automatically, if someone tried, if Rhonda tried to take a day off, but Laura had already scheduled off, it would pop up. This day is not available for you to take off.
For Kelly and Lynn, because Lynn's her backup or whatever.
It also integrates, once um the department head approves a time sheet for someone for the pay period. When we go to do payroll, it will download the hours and everything into the S and A. So it should save us a lot of time and.
It'll be a better tracking mechanism.
Currently, we cannot track when people are coming, going.
Our accountability.
Our accountability for breaks.
Let me ask you this.
He's got that look.
I got this, got that, got that. As soon as the. Calendar year comes along, I'm gonna jump out there and I'm gonna make sure that I get this day off.
Still gotta be approved by your department head.
Oh, so we can't just lock it in.
Oh, no, if Haley goes in and says, I want um December twenty sixth off, she doesn't automatically get it. It shows as pending. Until a department head approves it.
All right, so what what is it? Saint Antlers Day or whatever, whatever it's called nowadays? Do we have a, do we have a, I mean, is this, I tell you, this is the problem.
No, this is more efficient. This will make it more efficient.
It has been a problem with people who are covering for each other.
Oh, that's.
Wanting the same day off and then getting kind of upset.
Yeah.
When they're not getting it.
What is the policy? Did, now, for example, if I, if I, every single year, take off. You know, these plum timelines, uh does that mean that that I have to take at least a year break, that I gotta at least let somebody else?
I feel like you do, Steve.
Well, I think we should make that a policy, then not, not just up to whoever can jump in there first and get it.
I think it's up to the department.
I I think it should be a company-wide policy.
Well, is there any uh the union play a role in any of that, whereas it's set by seniority and.
Right now, it's it's never been touched in the F O P L C contract as to a a prioritization. Of PTO request. Um it's kind of as it's been, um and I won't use a term. Uh first come, first served, so to speak. Um and not that that as its own little niche is the issue. Uh it can exacerbate issues. I think the biggest thing, at least from my perspective, um. Is adding a heightened level of clarification and accountability to all. Uh and for me, at least, um. If we're turning in our biweekly uh time sheets and I submit mine for the the timeline of a Thursday. Um my my week doesn't end until the Ys come right back around to Monday. So there'd be, if I'm already submitted my time sheet on a Thursday, and then I have. A a potential miscalculation or gross misunder- or miscalculation through the weekend of what my my work time is. This just affords another technology to seamlessly integrate into BSNA for tracking of hours work.
Yeah.
From my perspective.
And it also will be able to run reports of what it was scheduled and what people actually were.
All right, so I I've never been a huge fan uh of these things, uh but let me, let me just. Uh let me just run with this a little bit. So, so if if my day starts at eight thirty. And if I get here at eight fifteen and I clock in, what, did I get fifteen minutes of bonus time or did I just donate fifteen minutes of my time?
By our work contract uh with F O P L C, uh work uh starts at eight. You are not considered tardy until eight oh six AM.
I forget to stamp, I forget to log in and it's eight thirty three and, oh jeez, I forgot to do that. Did I just eat up some PTO?
No, you, we can override it.
Okay. And you get breaks twice a day or something like that?
Yes.
What, fifteen minutes or something?
Correct. Right, so it would also track if someone's taking twenty five minute breaks. And you actually have to be at your desk and at your computer to log in at eight o'clock.
Well, it does have a mobile aspect.
Which we don't have to give everybody access to the mobile. We will decide who gets the mobile.
Okay. So the mobile is something maybe we could use for our, you know, call?
Well, that would be if we want to, it's, the month, the annual fee is fifty eight dollars per employee. So this quote is just to have our full-time people on it.
Okay.
I mean, if it's working out great and we feel it would be worth the expense, that is some, we can add people at any time.
I just think it's gonna save a lot of time when it comes to payroll.
It will save a lot of time.
Trustee.
And we won't be chasing pay um PTO slips. That's something we seem to be chasing after people take their PTO, because.
So I guess, do we have to develop a policy in regards to the rules and how how that's gonna operate?
It's a different, yeah, it's a different issue.
Well.
Well.
Or is it?
No, maybe not.
Well, I mean, I'm sure there's Fair Labor Standards Act, which, a six-minute rule, I'm aware of that one. Um but, does it need to be spelled out?
At least have a time clock here when you're first in.
How did you like it? Did you guys have to do it when the county implemented this?
Yeah, it's horrible.
But I'm also getting.
So uh trustee Polly, yeah.
And this quote, it says a uh last minute discount or something, so. This is a yearly fee?
Well, the implementation. I- implementation is a one-time fee.
Okay, so the other fees, the discounts there, so that's a yearly fee?
Yes.
So, so next year, we won't be getting the twenty percent off?
No.
So with that being said, uh is there a motion on the table um to pursue uh this software?
I'll make a motion that we approve the time clock plus software for the clerk's office.
We have a motion on the table. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Been moved and supported. Further discussion?
BSNA just doesn't have anything out there.
There, we did call them and it's three thousand dollars a year and it's basically a spreadsheet.
Oh, okay.
One other question. Within this, I, you know, the TCP had voluminous stuff there and frankly, I didn't go through it all. But is there a a way for the department heads to also keep records? Within a personnel file, an electronic personnel file? In other words, uh you know, uh annual reviews, things like that?
It's part of this time clock plus, you know.
Okay.
One more question, okay, trustee Lappin.
PTO. If we, if we go over the line of PTO.
Like, what do you mean over the?
So I, if we get, how how many hours we get a PTO?
Okay.
And if we, and if the person goes beyond that. Can they buy next year a couple of days that can?
That's not our policy.
Okay.
So the system will like, let's say it's January and you're scheduling time off in September. And you only have like ten hours of PTO right now. It will figure what you would have in September. And know whether or not you will have enough to take that time off. And then everybody will have a login to it and they can check at any time and see what their current balances are, what they've used, what days they've used, when.
So I guess, is this gonna be beneficial, worth the money?
I think it's gonna be beneficial to everybody in the management.
I, I see pa, I see pause from just me personally, as an employee of the township. I know that my time sheets have probably not been as accurate, just because I don't come back after a weekend and say, actually, can I have my time sheet back so I can add in X amount of hours? Not that for me, as salary, that has any positive, but I like to represent what I'm doing on tax dollars. So, to me, I, I see the benefit in it, um, and especially overseeing other department heads. I know, uh, one department in particular has always had some issues with timeliness of getting their, their pay, uh, PTO slips, um, and their times, uh, submitted. And if this affords them a better, uh, vein of, uh, meeting those, those timeframes for submission, it makes every, because payrolls can be delayed half a day, uh, if a department doesn't submit on a timely basis. So that's, that's the other thing, it's lost time.
Talking to Mark today, and he was thinking, I'm, he needed a program for doing scheduling, which he would be able to do the fire department schedule, which is a little more complicated than the rest of the scheduling through this program. This will do this for him.
And we, we have budgeted monies in somebody's line item.
I did, I put another sheet in front of you when you sat down, and it's breaking it out by department under the IT GL for each department.
Oh, here it is.
And there is enough money in all those GLs.
So that's how you spread it, okay.
Is there any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Reiner?
I'm first?
Yeah.
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
No.
Clerk Plavich, yes? Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crowe?
No.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Okay, moving forward, um, to the next, uh, item of business is the, uh, our annual, um, renewal of our firewall software. But a lot of TCP stuff.
It's, it's.
You should try to like, get your backpack organized.
I, well, I did, but I forgot that, that was three sapling trees, printed out. Um, moving forward with the, uh, this is the Yo and Yo, this is, uh, our firewall, uh, and at this point in time, uh, I'd entertain a motion to move forward with our annual renewal of one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars, um, for our firewall.
Yo and Yo has a computer consulting side.
I'll make that one.
Okay, we have a motion to move forward with, uh, securing another annual fee for our firewall. Is there support? I'll support it. Yes, further discussion? Ms. Ellery Summers?
Um, is there a reason we don't get like a five-year agreement or a five-year contract? Should we get a better deal if we spread it over five years, or why don't we do it annually?
I, this has always been passed through, through ten-ten. I don't know the, I don't have an answer to that. The only answer I have to this is, I think we're less than a business week away from, um, losing our firewall, isn't it?
No, I, I get that.
So time is of the essence with this year.
I understand that. I just mean, in a year, we should ask and.
No, I, I, I think we can easily send an email to, uh, ten-ten, asking what a quote would be for a five-year, uh, subscription, or if they're limited to an annual renewal. That's a fair question.
Well, I guess that answers my question. You know, my question was, if ten-ten's doing our IT stuff, you know, why, why were we getting a separate bill from Yo and Yo, but this is a subcontractor thing directly to?
This is directly for our firewall, yes.
And, and they don't provide that through ten-ten?
Not that I know, they use, I think that you actually, them, they themselves use the same company, that's.
So they referred us to Yo and Yo, and we made our direct.
Yeah. So instead of having a one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollar bill, if we had them do it for us, it might be fifteen thousand or fifteen hundred dollars. I, why have additional administrative costs added to it if it's?
Alright. Well, it's necessary.
Yeah, oh, it's more than, I think that, uh, uh, we've had federal entities and other institutions that bear not a name out of the Greater District of Columbia, um, commend us as a township for the level of IT preparedness that we have. Um, and that's something that we should all be thankful for, especially now we've expanded, um, cybersecurity as an insurance mechanism. Um, we are actually, uh, very forward-thinking with our IT capabilities and our, uh, security measures with IT. Do you have?
I, I know, but I wanna talk to you privately about an email I got supposedly from you, so.
Well, yeah, everybody goes on fishing trips sometimes, so.
I get this too. You want a hundred bucks from me.
Well, I got one from Michelle saying, hey, I can't talk right now, um, please send me a fifty-dollar gift certificate to Amazon.
I bought all those credit cards.
It was a unique ask, Michelle. Oh, I didn't get you that fifty-dollar gift certificate, by the way. Actually, I thought our habitual shopper, of which, she does go to meetings, and she's getting this.
I think I had to buy six fifty-dollar gift cards for you.
Oh, yeah, well. I appreciate, I appreciate the gift cards, uh, but I did not send that email. Now, phishing is, uh, honestly, that, that, there are so many modern-day threats that even the best of security can't catch everything, so.
Well.
The human aspect.
And what Russ just talked about, and what we've all had, is that we see the name, we don't see where the email's from, and so the best thing to do is to look at the, if it doesn't make sense, where did it come from?
Yeah, first things first, look at where it was sent from.
Right.
Well, you had to tap on your name, right? And then you see.
Yeah, it should be right there.
Did Nathan tell you, I love your smile?
Did I send that one to?
Together for lunch?
Oh, no. I'm glad, because that would have troubled me a lot.
Don't fib, come on. Um, so we have, uh, motion and support. Any further discussion? Hopefully not. Wonderful. Uh, roll call, please.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes? Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Uh, yes. Uh, next item of business is, um, an invoice from, uh, CNS carriers. Uh, this invoice is for dust control, uh, on two, um, aspects of township property. Uh, one being, uh, the first, uh, expense was for dust control at the Piper Road, uh, Tower. Um, and that's right by the Alanon Club.
Oh, I wondered.
I think it's Alano Club is really what it is, but we must call it Alano.
Potato, but I don't know. It's a, it's a bright blue club.
So we're doing it because it's the Piper Roads Tower. We're not doing it for the club.
Yeah, I think that they just put that in there so they knew where they're going.
Oh, okay. Because I thought, I was like, why are we doing their dust control?
That's what I wondered too.
We only charge them, like, what, a dollar?
Yeah, we're five dollars into a five-year contract. Yes.
Dust control taken care of by that county?
Uh, for roads. So these are, so they donated, um, the dust control. So every year, we've always had these. Some of the numbers are now just bigger, and henceforth, it's come to the board, uh, because, uh, Copping and Sons was sold, uh, a year ago, and so, yes.
I have one question on the DNR.
Yep.
Isn't that shared by three community, or a state, city, and us?
Uh, that is correct.
So they pay in their share?
I have, we didn't, I did not ask them. We could probably turn around and say, due to this cost, would you please have that? Um, I'm not opposed to that, because it is a shared station. Um, but right now, I just, I, I'm looking at just making this, uh, payment. Uh, they did donate, every year, they donate the, the dust control for the baseball diamonds. So they do that as a donation, so that's CNS carriers.
So these are like parking lots and access roads?
Yes, on township property.
I got you.
Or share. So that's why it's out of the purview of dust control from Opina County Road Commission. Yes.
I think it would be a great idea to ask the city, the state, and us a third, a third, a third for that.
We can, I, I'm fine with asking it.
I mean, we already split the DTE bill with the city.
I, I'm fine with turning around. I mean, we can make payment, and then we can collect it on the, the flip side. Um.
But this is not on a road, then. This is not paper road.
No, this is, so.
How much traffic are we getting in this parking lot?
Well, I kinda was.
It's not a part, it's not a parking lot. It's actually two driveways that go along in between a private residence and the Alano Club that go to our water tower.
I got you.
So, we have, and it's actually the easement that was afforded to us by the private citizen resident owner to give us access to that easement, to get to our water tower. So they kind of, by default, get some benefit, so that they're, part of their driveway isn't kicking dust when we have a water dig, and that's the closest place for logistically dumping spoils at a dig, we can dump it there. So when you have gravel trains cycling through there, and there's no dust control, it becomes pretty dusty. Um, but did we have, uh, uh, with that being said, and I definitely, I would entertain a motion to make payment of one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, and I would say that the, the best GL that that would come from would be, uh, but I, I did, but then I actually had kind of a, an afterthought of nine-three-one, which is maintenance and repair building, but it's, I would still say it's best to be served out of seven-five-six, as I originally told it.
After we crossed it out, and we gotta write it back in.
Don't jump to conclusions too fast, but I would make, entertain.
I will make that motion.
Wonderful. We have a motion on the table to make payment to CNS carriers of one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fifty cents from GL, uh, seven-five-six-point-zero-zero-zero, coming out of one-five-nine-two. Is there support?
I'll support.
It's been moved and supported. Further discussion?
Should we add to the motion to cede out the, the costs to the other municipalities?
I was inherently just going to put together a letter following this for, uh, one of, one-third going to MDNR, one-third going to.
Of just the six forty.
Of just that one.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, cool.
So with that being said, any further discussion?
So is that part of the motion or not?
I'm just gonna send it. I mean, that's fair enough.
So the motion's just to pay CNS carriers?
Correct.
So we have a motion and support.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Uh, roll call vote.
Trustee Lappin?
Yes.
Clerk Plavich, yes? Treasurer Ellery Summers?
Yes.
Trustee Crowe?
Yes.
Trustee Reiner?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Supervisor Skibby?
Yes. Uh, moving forward to, uh, the last item of new business, which is a capital improvement plan. Um, inherently, as, uh, the questions came in of, of budget and a plan, uh, systemic, uh, to not only a department, but all departments. And at our, one of our previous personnel committee, uh, meetings, it became very evident, um, that as a personnel committee, this is a, a greater issue than just a personnel issue. Um, and it would be, I guess I'm looking to the board, uh, to see which direction the board would like to take. Part of me wants to say, uh, let's put together a committee to get, um, some of the rough work done of how do we format, we are actually started kind of a process on the whiteboard of breaking out departments, what perspective potentials are coming up, and how do I anticipate budget shortfalls, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I think, when all is said and done, uh, these CIP will be folded into the budget process, so that the entire board has a, a say in this process. Um, but I, I look to the board and with the question of, should we set forth at least a committee at this point to start some of the groundwork to come back to the board?
If I see a capital improvement.
Correct.
But are you referencing that in regard to funding?
That's. Well, I, I'm not site-specific to, to, no, that, that is a department, that, that kind of folded in the personnel as going to various plans and scenarios and, and structure types to what shortfalls in terms of funding mechanisms. So that led to, what would a potential millage look like if that were to be the ask? But then, that millage question was systemic, because we also know that, and we had, uh, Ryan Braggie show up. We knew that coming through the budget process at the beginning, or at the end of last year, uh, we were at five-point-eight million dollars, um, behind on our roads to get it to par. Well, that number since April one has now increased to six million dollars. And so with an anticipated cost of, I believe, what, seven-hundred thousand dollars for one mile of asphalt of roads is the cost this year? It just kept going of, where does it stop and how do we anticipate?
And we fund that out of general fund.
Right now, it's funded out of general.
We don't even get that much money, you know, one-point-oh-six.
No.
Mill.
No.
So, a what, to me, a CIP is a capital improvement plan, as opposed to the cost of running each department.
And this may be a misnomer.
Okay.
It, because it's not just capital improvement. It just, it just ballooned from a personnel committee discussion into not only CIP, but millage ass, et cetera. So trustee Foley.
I believe that's part of our charter, that we have a capital improvement plan also, but I'm not sure.
Yes.
Okay, we, we started to dig into, uh, stalker, but we never got around to getting involved.
Yeah.
I think it's an important thing. It's, I guess it's like, maybe, we talked about sock money. Well, this is like a plan for the sock. We have to put a plan out there. This building is gonna need something. We gotta start putting a plan in place. How's it gonna happen until one of these days, rough game's in, we'll have a plan?
Well, it's not a capital improvement, that's just maintenance. I mean, you know, I mean, that's, we're not building anything new here. We're, we're just trying to keep.
Keep operating with.
Yeah. That's exactly why I brought that up, because I can only think of, really, the water and sewer would be our main capital improvement expenditures that I can think of.
Primarily outside of the, the fire, public safety.
Yeah, and so, yeah, if you named it something, I, I understand what you're saying, uh, and, and it's probably a great idea so that we could, in fact, plan for the future in whatever capacity that means, whether it be it's a new roof, a new township hall, a new fire up barn, whatever it might mean, leasing equipment back to ourselves, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think those are sound business decisions.
So, under that same guise, and I, do you have anything additional, trustee Foley? Because the table is yours.
Maybe you need a committee to get started with it, to start some kind of plan. We have zero right now?
Well, you have a little bit more than zero. We actually, the water department, we have a CIP that's been in place now, coming into its, I believe, third year.
But for the township itself.
We're deficient. So that's where this, we need to start somewhere, and I, that's kind of why I, I figured, I think inherently, it's always gonna come back to the entire board, but I think there's a lot of groundwork that can be accomplished, whether it's just looking at building and grounds and scheduling, figuring out what those additions, corrections, modifications to our existing structure, which is, um, very inefficient, I, I will say that, as it stands. So improvements can be made internally, and then scoring, getting something on paper to say, this is our next plan of attack for building expenditures and having some mechanisms in place.
We gotta have a revenue plan. That's what we gotta have.
Or we have to have a grant plan.
And then we'll.
Or, or we have to have, uh, several different ways that you can get money outside of just, uh, taxpayer revenue.
So I, I guess then, a, a start point would be to construct a committee. I think that I, I wanna have some, some opportunity for, uh, trustees to start this, to bring back some findings, because, like I said.
I'll volunteer, but I want someone on it smarter than I am.
I volunteer, but I don't.
Okay, it looks like you two are on the same committee, and you can flip a coin to see who's the smartest. No, um, is there a third, or?
I think it's probably a three-person thing.
Yeah.
We have to keep it at.
Well, you're on committee, so.
I'm an ex-officio, um, but if there's anybody else.
I think the clerk needs to be out.
Look really good.
I'm not making eye contact with trustee Crowe right now.
Sorry, Michelle.
So.
Well, like, you don't keep me busy, and that's my personal. I can be on it.
And, and if you can't, I can, I mean, I think the conversation really needs to start before we come into budget sessions and looking at what. And looking at what our anticipated expenditures.
I'm sorry, this would be a great thing to put out on the M T A blog. To ask if there is such an animal out there that other municipalities have used. And is there a template by which we can follow to move, uh, forward on establishing a plan of attack?
Yeah, well, I, I, I think that there's always a way to not recreate.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I guess by, we're talking about doing a capital improvement plan.
Yeah.
So that would be any modifications to this building.
It could be this building.
Like if we needed to make a bigger garage for the fire department, that would be part of our capital improvement plan.
Or, or selling a sawside station and moving it. With bigger doors.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we're like saying, we're gonna look at a twenty year, a ten year plan of building a new. Complex, more centered in the township and it's all gonna come together, but you start a plan.
We need to start the plan, so as I hear it, we have three gracious volunteers, that being trustee Reiner, trustee Polley and clerk Plavich. Who jumped in with both feet, uh, and we don't need any motion, um, but I would say. This, this really stemmed and, and jumped in cash because you're sitting there like you're befuddled. It, we, we started talking as personnel and it just, the amount of things that we need to start thinking about. In terms of planning for.
We need that list, don't we?
We need it.
We need that list for the committee to even.
Well, we're gonna, and then this is also because I have, and this would be something that this committee would be able to, and I pass it on. Is, uh, the survey that I've brought forward and discussed a little bit is. You know, if these are asked where it's gonna be a potential for a millage request, we need to have some internal dialogue and figure out what that is actually looking like. So that we can have as many facts together before we even go down that path. And so that would be something I would definitely hand over to those three because I got it to a point of. This is what your cost would look like if A, B and C through X, Y and Z. So that way you guys could formulate something, make recommendations back to the board and we can utilize our, our public. Uh, for input as well of what, how categorize, what's your most important criteria? And, and get some feedback and kind of schedule improvements in that manner as well.
I can't help but wonder if the nine hundred and some thousand dollars of.
Nine fifteen, five thirty-six.
Or so.
To the.
Isn't, uh, somehow. Available if we have a plan.
Well, there are, so, and that's one of the caveats that kind of stemmed part of this conversation as we talk about this building and its shortcomings. Um, those C L F, R F monies can actually be used for, uh, H VAC. So we have, uh, R K I C equipment on our roofs. Um, what if those were to be, uh, and those are green lighted, uh, by Arpa expenditures? Um, those are also, uh, if those projects were to come to fruition. Um, inherently, if the roof is damaged in that process, which it always is because you're drilling holes through it. Um, then roof replacement becomes part of that cost. And so now we have a mechanism that can probably tackle some of the big things that may or may not be on that C I P list for buildings and grounds.
I feel she put a great big hole in that, uh. Fire department swing, raise the roof to a three feet.
Well, there is.
You know, in some communities, they have joint municipal buildings, city, township, county. Combined buildings. There is a plan. To improve and put a wing on the back of the existing nineteen thirties. Builder nineteen twenties, go whatever it was courthouse.
Oh, the A D A compliant one?
The A D A compliant wing, but I mean, it's a great idea and it would be a, a wonderful addition to that building. And it might be able to, I mean, there's, uh, there's potential there with those kinds of funds available to us. To do some possible discussion and combining of, of, uh, of facility like that. Or a different facility where there could be some, because they got some money too that they don't know how to spend. Um, from the.
So they got a lot.
Yeah.
What's gonna happen with the D H S building?
Well, the D H S building will be vacant soon, you know, uh, that's another, you know, potential.
But don't have to be in the.
That needs a lot of H VAC work.
Yeah, there's a stipulation.
Glitch there and then I believe that we have to be actually located in the township that we represent.
Well.
So the city and county could do it, but we couldn't.
Right.
Yeah, we could build a new building.
But, but it's a conversation nonetheless, and so I think.
Yeah, no, those are great things.
There's inherently, uh, some, some benefits. So with that being said, um, we now have a, a three member committee to start, uh, investigating and categorizing. And, um, putting together, uh, C I Ps, uh, for the building, et cetera, et cetera. Um, uh, so.
Suggestions from other members of the board will be welcomed.
Yep, uh, you can send them through encrypted email, uh, so that way. Um, with that, with that being said, um, that concludes our new business. Uh, this now brings us to our last opportunity for public comment, if there is any public comment, uh, online, please. Uh, use the bottom task bar to raise your hand or send a, uh, text message so that we can identify you and address your, uh, public comment. Again, this is the last opportunity for public comment, if you're online and have public comment, please use the bottom task bar in Zoom to raise your hand. Or send a message so that we can identify and address your comments. Seeing and hearing no public comment, is there any further discussion, uh, for the greater good of the board? I think we kind of covered that in the last few minutes, um, with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the table, is there support?
Or.
It's been moved and supported, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-seven and okay, well.